Mr. Whittle's gonna be a little late. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty P. M., Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine, Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call and roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes. Ma'am, I'm calling telephonically. This is our doctor's office. I'm thirteen oh one in Danville, Virginia.
Okay, can you hear us okay?
Can you turn it up any scar? I can't. So we can hear him better. Is that it?
It's a bit strange. Everything outside.
I can't.
So Mr. Ingram is gonna join remotely. Mr. Ingram, are you from your residence?
I think he called his address.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whittle? Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Moving to item three. Agenda items to be added. Are there any items to be added to the agenda? If not hearing any, we'll move to item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve, the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
Yes, ma'am, I'll go.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Unions. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the county's Facebook and the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors meetings. Please remember that the board's meeting, work session, board's work sessions is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorder conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person removed from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the board's bylaws are permitted to make any comments under the hearing of the citizens of tonight's business meeting. Moving to item five, presentations. Oh, five A, we have the county broadband update, and that's Mr. Rob Taylor. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Turn it on, turn your mic on, Mr. Taylor. I think it's off on the side.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, speak into it.
Rob Taylor with River Street Networks, here to provide you an update on the ongoing fiber-to-the-home project. Just a quick overview. There we go. Get all this technical stuff taken care of for you guys before the next one. All right, so anyway, just a quick overview, the total project's gonna pass approximately sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine locations throughout the county. We're using federal funding under the CAF II and ARDOF program, as well as funding from the state under VADI twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as well as county matching funding and River Street funding. Currently, we're passing three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven locations with fiber. That increase is approximately nine hundred and some locations from the last time I was up here, or somebody from River Street was here presenting. Those locations, a majority of those, are in the Callens area, off of what we call the Strawberry C.O. That's a data hut that's right off of Strawberry Road there inside Callens. We currently have about nineteen hundred and twelve locations being built, and we have successfully completed the installation of all the data huts in the county, except for Ringgold. We're working on that one. We have White's Construction out of Southernland working in the Ringgold area, putting gravel down a lot, putting in a storm drain for entrance, and getting that ready for a building to be set. If you remember, we were planning on putting a building in at the Roswell School during the Christmas break, but we didn't make that timeline, but we were able to get that in during the spring break, so we didn't cause any delays or anything with the school trying to get the building set. So, just to give you an update, so as of four eleven, the last week, we had three hundred and eighty-four customers installed. That was an increase of one hundred and thirty-one locations since the last meeting. We currently have one hundred and twenty-nine orders that are in process, that's additional customers wanting to be installed. We recently had at the, at the library, we recently had a sign-up session, we had a lot of people attend there, and I think we signed up with thirty more customers at that time. We'll plan on having something like that on a monthly basis, or at least a quarterly basis moving forward, to keep interest moving. Again, since the last reporting, we've also increased the number of locations by nine hundred and twelve, which are two, three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. This gives us a total take rate of about fourteen percent. So all locations that we've passed so far, we've got about a fourteen percent take rate. Again, we think the first year, we normally, during the first year, look at a modeling, a finance model of only five percent take. We're already at fourteen percent. As I mentioned earlier, Ringgold is the only remaining building that we have to bring online, and again, White's Construction out of Southernland's working on getting that site ready for us. Since the last meeting, we were able to get power installed by Mecklenburg Electric out there at Strawberry. Once we got that, the power installed out there, we were able to bring seven hundred and seventy-two locations online off of that Strawberry hut, and again, that's in the Callens neighborhood, or part of the county. We continue to work with our marketing department to begin marketing efforts in the areas in which we are getting active drops ready. We've already got active orders from the Strawberry C.O., so we already have people on Strawberry or in the Callens area already placing orders online. We're also working up a new process to speed up connections. One of our biggest issues that we have is locates. So, we bury the fiber from the road to the house, which means we have to have all the utilities located before we can bury that fiber. Well, when the locates company is, what typically happens is, we call Miss Utilities, let them know where we're going to be doing the work, where the fiber's gonna be run from the pole to what side of the house, and so on and so forth, and then normally, there's a marking that we put on the ground to designate the route we wanna go. Miss Utilities then confirms whoever provides utilities, you know, if it's Mecklenburg Electric, or if it's Danville Utilities, or whoever, they'll say, all right, we'll need to contact this utility company, we'll need to contact this cable company, we might need to contact this other provider, this phone company. And they place the order, and then we have to wait until the locates are completed.
That's right.
And if they don't get completed for weeks, the people are waiting on the service. So what we're proposing is, what we'll do is, we'll put a fiber drop across the ground, we're gonna move from black fiber drops to orange, so the homeowner will see it, since it is grass-cutting season, if the homeowner is willing to allow us to do that, and that way, we can get them hooked up while we wait on Miss Utilities. Once they come over and do the markings, then we can put the drop in the ground and cover everything up and put it back to where it needs to be. So that's our plans. Hopefully, we won't have to come to it, but right now, as I was explaining to the staff, we have these hundred and some locations that are waiting for service, but we're waiting on locates. Our install crews have about one week worth of work to do, and then we'll be caught up, and we don't have any drops waiting on them because we're waiting on locates. So, this is not just a Pennsylvania County problem, this is not a state problem, this is across the country. This locates is one of the biggest issues, and the reason why is because most locate companies were staffed for a handful of locates a week, you know? How often would somebody call in to get a location done, only if you were digging, putting in footings, or running a new utility, or anything else? So the number of locates have gone from a few dozen a month to hundreds a month, and they just don't have the locators there to take care of that load. So, anyway, that basically covers the presentation. Again, if anyone's interested in service, they can always go to myriverstreet.net, they'll go see the page, drop down to where fiber is the future, they can click on Pennsylvania County, and go to this map where they can enter their address to look and see if service is available, and if it is, they can go on and sign up for service. If it's not available, they can always register that they're interested, and once service is available, then we'll contact them and let them know they can sign up. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Mr. Ingram, can you hear us? Do you have any questions?
Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you for coming, appreciate the presentation. I know the headache of, of location work. You call Miss Utility, and they, you know, they're not on our schedule, I promise you. So you're going, you're telling us that you're gonna be, you're gonna go ahead and start connecting, but you're gonna leave it on top of the ground, correct?
So.
Then hand-trench it in?
Yeah. The discussion is, we'll give, I believe, we'll give the homeowner the choice. They can either wait, or we can go on and put the drop from the road to their house, it'll be on the surface, we'll need them to move it when they go to mow the grass and stuff.
Yeah, I understand.
But at least they can have the service, and it'll be up and working until the locate's done, and then we'll come back and put it in.
Yeah.
You know?
And it's not like it's an emergency, you can't get an emergency locate, because I know about major storms come up, underground line goes bad, you get an emergency locate, and you still have to leave it above ground.
Yeah. And that's where we, we borrow that, that happens quite a bit, you're right, that happens quite a bit on emergency repairs.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I fully understand that, so, what is, you know, when summer is coming and all, people mow the grass already, but how do you think installations will be going? How many are you installing a day, is what I'm trying to?
So right now, I know that we're, we're staffed from our Danville office, our Gretnon office, as well as some outside contractors.
Contracts.
I wanna say that we're currently staffed to where we can do somewhere between, thinking, about forty-five a week, right?
Okay.
So, and that's, we're in the process, if you look in the paper, we're in the process of hiring four more people, and they'll be brought in and trained. They won't go out right away, but they'll, they'll train with the other people. We're looking to double that before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yep. And again, the biggest issue we have right now is getting the drops installed, but waiting for the locates to happen first.
Sure.
And so, like I said, we've got about one week's worth of installs before our guys that do installation are gonna be waiting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dalton.
Mr. Tucker, yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Just to kinda follow up on Mr. Dudley's line of questioning there, let's say, a homeowner decides, okay, let's go ahead and run the cable on top of the ground, then you say maybe a month, two months later, they do the locate, so they're ready, they call your people to go ahead and put the cable on the ground, what is the lead time where you're anticipating for someone to get back to that homeowner?
Yeah, that, that I don't know, because we haven't started that process. I can tell you that I was told that our drop crews can typically do nine drops a day.
Right? Nine drops?
Nine drops a day.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, if you look at it, you know, they're able to far outpace our installation crews, but we're doubling up our installation crews so that we can stay right, right behind them.
Yeah.
Again, it all, it all kind of depends on how stacked up we get. You know, if we have a hundred locations waiting on locates, and the next thing you know, they go clear out fifty tickets in one day, right? But more than likely, they're not gonna do that. They'll clear out a few tickets in a day, and we'll be able to just process them as quickly as possible. Again, our, our wish is to get people hooked up as quickly as possible, get the service turned on as quickly as possible, and get everything tidied up and done, so that we can move on to the next area.
I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? Mr. Taylor, you have a question, sir? Go ahead.
How is the connected to activated rate progressing? It seemed like it was improving due to marketing of?
Well, again, we typically forecast financially only a five percent take rate. We're already at fourteen percent of the passings. I would expect that we would, we would see what we've seen in other rural communities. We're averaging over thirty-five to forty percent right now in the King and Queen community, and we just finished them up like November of last year, and that's a hundred percent. And that community's only about four thousand passings, and so we're talking about four times that. Not that we'll get thirty-five to forty percent here, we've gotta get the build finished, but I expect us probably by the end of this year to probably be close to twenty percent of all passings will be connected by that time. Again, we're, we're not seeing the, we're not seeing the application slowdown, you know? What we're seeing is a backlog of work, and that backlog is being caused right now by something outside our, you know, we can't make any changes to it. So, yeah.
Mr. Dudley, you got a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton, thank you. Are you, have you got active promotions going on right now?
We do.
With this?
We do.
Okay.
I don't know the exact one, the last one I heard, I think it was, it was a gift card of so much, or a gift card of so much, or so much off for the first three months, or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. So we do have active promotions going on, we have active marketing going on.
Yes.
We still have direct sales going on. Like I said, we just had a face-to-face meeting, it was just a couple of weeks ago, at one of the local libraries as well. We continue to do that. Again, it's, it's our goal to get people hooked up as quickly as possible, just, just like you all invested money, we invested money, and we don't see any of that return until we get people on the network, so.
Are you, are you guys, just a curious question, you guys regulated by the State Corporation Commission?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
I know the rates and power companies and stuff are, I just was curious about that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir. Any more questions, Mr. Taylor? Would you be able to provide an update in about sixty days?
Yes, sir.
I think, is that good for everybody?
Yes, sir.
About sixty days, okay.
Thank you, Aaron, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, appreciate it.
Thank you again.
All right, we're gonna move to item five B, a potential unpaved roads to be added to the county's six-year plan. It's gonna be Mr. Craddock, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. So it's about that time of year when we need to start looking at which roads to add to our secondary six-year plan. You should have a handout in front of you, yell at the bottom of it. We would like to have our public hearing next month, if possible, so I wanted to talk with you all about what roads we wanna add to put before the public. So on this list, you have the, everything above the yellow is what is already on the secondary six-year plan that we put on in previous years, and then the yellow is what I'm proposing to add, and that's all it is, it's just my proposal. We can discuss it and change it however you all would like, but we have about seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in fiscal year thirty, which would be, I have it shown as calendar year twenty twenty-nine, and that's enough to do, just real rough numbers, between three point six and three point eight miles worth of roadway. So what I'm showing on here is three point seven, eight miles worth, and that's using a figure of two hundred thousand dollars per mile. That's just using what our current cost is and adding in some inflation. So, the roads I chose, Route six ninety-four Dairy View Road over by the Vanderhyde Dairy, that is actually the unpaved road that we have with the highest traffic volume in the county. Rock Creek Road, Route seven eighty-one, that's sort of a cut-through over in the northwest corner of the county, it kinda connects Route forty and Musville Road, and then Route six seventy-one Midway Road, which is sort of a cut-through between Route forty and Deerview Road, Route six seventy. But, like I said earlier, these are just, just what I'm proposing, we can change it however you all would like. The important thing is that we stay somewhere in the three and a half to four mile range, and that's just using really rough numbers, but as the years progress, and we see how much money we have left over, as we build these roads, we will narrow it down.
Okay. So if it's any we wanna add, when do you need those by?
Well, just sometime before the next meeting. But just keep in mind, if we wanna add anything, we need to take something off.
Okay, I got you. Because these, these three pretty much covers what you have money for, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But, so if we wanna take off, say, if we wanna take off Midway Road, it's a mile and a half, we can add another road, or a combination of roads, that's a mile and a half.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Craddock? Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Okay, I know this has been voiced before, and I just wanna ask it, even though this road is not in my district, but it's whitetail, out there off of forty-one, and again, we go back to the same, I guess, statement, that it's not up to code, it's not up to what V. dot standards are, and I just wanted to know if that is at all possible to get that one at least gravelled, or some type of improvement to it? There are a lot of homes on that road. Those folks that live on that road, they've got kids, they have to transport them up to forty-one for the bus to pick them up. I don't even think the bus comes down there anymore to pick them up. So is there anything, Jay, that we can do to improve that road? I mean, put a slurry compound on it, gravel on it, anything? I know you're not gonna go to the pavement route, but it would sure help those folks that live down the road. And I think this is actually in Tunstall District, it's in Mr. Ingram's district, but since it's not too far from, you know, where my district is there, and those folks have talked to me about it, so I just wanted to throw that one out there and see if there's any way to get that kind of improved, if you will.
Well, not as part of this program. So the roads on this list, these are all roads that are already state-maintained roads, and they're still gravel roads. And we have about, roughly about a hundred and forty miles worth of unpaved roads still in Pennsylvania County that haven't been paved yet, that are already state-maintained. So you got all those that have been waiting in line all these years, and what you're talking about is a private road. It was, when it was built, the county ordinance did not require that new roads be built in accordance with V. dot standards, and so the way that was handled was, on the subdivision plat, there was, there's a note on that plat that states that this road is not built in accordance with V. dot standards, and, and no request will be made of the county in the future or V. dot to take over maintenance of this road. Now, since then, there has been an exception made in, in the Code of Virginia, where we can take the road, even though that note is on the plat, but it has to be brought up to V. dot standards before we would take it. So, and I, and you're probably thinking about the Rural Edition Program that we had years ago, where we could take in private roads, and actually, the state would put some funding towards bringing them up to standards, but where that money came from was the secondary construction program, and all that money really no longer exists with the implementation of the SmartScale program. So now, the secondary construction program basically just consists of unpaid road money, and that's, it can only be used for unpaid roads that are already in the system. So we can take the road, but it has to be brought up to V. dot standards first, and this day and time, you're looking at roughly, I mean, depending on things like, are there any pipes that need replacing, or that type of thing, hundred and fifty to hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to go in and take a road like Whitetail Road and, and surface treat it, put a hard surface on it, to get it up to standards where we could take it. But when you, and that sounds like a really high number, but when you divide that cost amongst thirty different property owners, it's really not that bad. The hard part's trying to get everybody to agree to do it, but if they could pull together and, and get the road paved, we would take it over and, you know, maintain it in perpetuity.
Okay, good, thank you. I just, I wanted that for clarification, and I would imagine that you might be available, or somebody from your office would be available if they had a meeting?
Yes, sir.
Where you could explain that to them?
Yes, sir, anytime.
Okay. And I do have a couple of areas in my district that they don't need paving, but they need some kind of improvement. For instance, there's one that, when it rains pretty heavy, like we've had this past week, it ponds across the road, and if you're traveling on that road at night, it's, you can't see it, and when you hit it, I mean, you hydroplane, you know, almost across that water. So I'd like to show that to you later on. And thank you for bringing in the Dairy View Road. I've been down that road a number of times, and I think that's gonna be a good addition to the, to the area over behind Vanderhyde Dairy there. And also, last thing is, I wanna thank you, if you had anything to do with it, for the new striping that's taking place right now today in the Mount Herman area on Route forty-one. So the vehicles are out there, they're striping it, so that's gonna be a great help, too, because at night, again, when it's raining heavy like that, you can't see those lines very well, and so this is gonna be a great addition to that particular stretch of road on Route forty-one. So, thank you. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Craddock, thank you for your update here. I know that folks down in my area on Midway Road, they will be excited about being on the six-year plan. This is off-topic to some degree, however, I wonder if you will be able to maybe get back with us, maybe in a couple of months, per se? We've had a pretty mild winter, and, you know, we didn't have the cost of snow removal, and I know that you've repurposed some of the money toward, you know, the cleanup, the trash along the highways and roadways in the county, but I would like to know if there is some additional money to, to use in terms of maintenance, repurposed? repurposing some of that money for maybe maintaining some of the roads for situations such as what Mr. Bowman is mentioning there, and, you know, there are other roads that we would like to consider addressing, if that's possible, or if there are some funds that are left.
Situations like Mr. Bowman mentioned, you know, isolated safety hazards like that? I mean, those are things we don't really need any special funding for. That's the type of things that our maintenance crews just do on a day-to-day basis.
That's right.
So I would encourage you all, when you get those types of complaints, just isolated spots with a depression in the road, potholes, trees, dead trees, that type of thing, to just let your constituents know they can call one eight hundred three six seven R O A D. So the acronym is four road, so it's easy to remember. And they can report those types of situations, and, and they go into a tracking database, and they go directly to the superintendent at the area headquarters, whose area it's in. So those type of things, absolutely, we can respond to very quickly.
Got you.
And don't really need any sort of, they don't have to be planned well in advance, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. Yes, I get that in terms of, you know, roads or conditions that would cause hazards, but I was more or less interested in, you know, the funds that would be available. For example, that we did not use to scrape roads, to put salt and sand down, that sort of thing. Can you possibly schedule yourself to get back with us, maybe in a couple of months, and, and kind of bring us up to speed in that area? Is that possible?
Well, I can, I can tell you now that those funds, on a statewide level, have already been accounted for. You know, we didn't spend as much in our area, but other areas of the state did, and more than average, so it's not going to be a pot of money sitting there that we can dip into that, next year is going to be pretty much a regular. When we start our fiscal year July first, you know, we'll be working with our normal budget.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'd be glad to meet with you anytime to have these discussions on particular things. Just maybe, maybe there are some creative solutions out there that we can help some of these things with.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any, any more questions, Mr. Craddock? Mr. Dalton?
Also, just to, to let the board know too, thank you, Jay, for your presentation and your roads, but it'd be good if you guys get his, his phone number, if you have problems. Jay will get with you, he will help you any way he can. I know that there's been some situations with us, some downpours, going down, say, Jaybird Hill, and something gets clogged up and something gets washed out. You give him a shout, and, and Jay will get the ball rolling to help you fix it. So I think it'd be convenient if all of us could at least stay in contact with him. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
I want the public to know, and I want the board to salute and celebrate. Mr. Craddock, I think since you met with us last, you received a promotion, so congratulations.
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate it.
Wait a minute, I ain't hear about that promotion, wait a minute.
I, I'm the, I was the assistant resident engineer.
Resident engineer.
Now I'm the resident engineer.
Okay.
I don't foresee our relationship changing at all.
Okay, good.
I'll still be the one that reports to you all, so.
That's good. Any more questions, anything for Mr. Craddock?
Yeah, Jay's very, very communicative. You just give him a shout and he'll help you out, I promise.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Craddock, thanks for everything you do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Moving to item six A, we have a potential Pennsylvania County Code Session, Section six dash six, exemption on real estate certainly in disabled persons. This is going to be Ms. Vanderhyde. Welcome.
It's good to be with you to talk about something other than budget this afternoon, although it does help some people offset their tax burden if we make some of the changes to our relief for elderly and disabled. So I won't take credit for this, what you have in your board packet, Mr. Hunt put together. He had some research done for the different localities. He researched nine different localities surrounding us to figure out what their total income threshold limits were, as well as net worth values. And so I just want to recap those, so you don't have to weed through all of that. We actually have a threshold limit of twenty-five thousand dollars currently, and how that stacks up with the other localities. The lowest county that surrounds us for the threshold limit is twenty-two thousand dollars, and the highest one is Roanoke County at fifty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And what that means is, anybody that makes fifty thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars or less would be eligible to apply for the program. So if you take an average of those nine, you know, where would that kind of put the average? It would be thirty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. So ours at twenty-five thousand dollars, we met with Ms. Gordon, she is here this afternoon, and please feel free to ask her questions about the program specifics, because she's going to be the expert on them. But we discussed perhaps raising our limit by twenty percent, which would put us at thirty thousand dollars currently. We're twen, we're at twenty-five, which all of this, you know, of course, would be up for discussion if you all wanted to see something different. So I looked at per capita, because it looks like there's people that's all over the board, and I'm not sure what their rationale was at setting it where, where it actually ended up for these localities. But our per capita income, and this, the latest figure is from twenty-two, is twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars is the per capita, that was the amount in twenty twenty-two. And of course, we're sitting in twenty twenty-four. So if we set it at thirty thousand dollars, it would be five and a half percent over that total. As far as net worths, they're everywhere. The net worth value is everywhere. Ours currently sits at sixty thousand dollars. The nine localities that we looked at, they ranged anywhere from fifty thousand dollars up to two hundred thousand dollars. So if you looked at that net worth value and took an average of it, you'd be at roughly a hundred and four thousand dollars. We were considering maybe raising our net worth from sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Just some ideas that we're throwing out. It's nothing that you all have to make a decision on, but we just wanted to give you a report that we are working on it, that we want to do what would be in the best interest of our citizens and what would help them the most. I think what would benefit them, you know, from my perspective, I think it would help for them to have some education, that we would put out more documentation about the program, because I feel like a lot of our elderly's just really aren't aware that it even exists. And I think it would not be a bad idea to maybe partner with maybe community action, or maybe even our commissioner's office could have sometimes that elderly citizens that maybe not are able to fill out the paperwork, that could come in to get some help with how to fill it out, or maybe help them with that documentation. Because I think that's a struggle for a lot of our elderly citizens and disabled citizens as well. Does anybody have any questions for myself or Ms. Gordon? Would you have anything to add?
Any questions, gentlemen? Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde, I appreciate that. And, Mr. Hunt, I thank you for doing the research on this also. This came up during the budget meeting, meetings that we had recently, and it was one of those areas that I specifically looked at and wanted to find out why this hadn't been done, because folks had contacted me, a couple of folks, not a bunch, a couple of folks about this, and wanted to know why in February the cutoff was, and we're just now settling on the budget. So I couldn't answer that question, it was just already done, okay? It's, it's what it is. But, that being said, now that we've set a tax rate, I'd like to see this move forward. I'd like to see it on the agenda for June, probably, to be voted on, so the folks then would have an idea of what they need in order to move forward in February, if we leave February as the date, so that way they can start some planning, they can be a little more proactive in this. That being said, I also like to set the amount, and this is just my, my recommendation here. I appreciate the opportunity there of, of looking at the total. But I would do, I'd recommend forty thousand dollars as the minimum there, because Danville, I think, is currently, what, at forty-two?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, forty-two-five is for your disabled.
Okay.
So third, for your normal elderly citizens taking advantage of the program, it'd be thirty-five.
All right.
It says, or forty-two-five applicant who is permanently and totally disabled.
All right, so is ours different? Is it like two different ones like that, totally disabled and? Yeah, I knew you weren't going to sit out there long.
Welcome, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you. No, ours is the same, whether you are elderly or totally and permanently disabled, it's the same amount.
So it's not broken down like Danville?
No.
Okay. So that being said, then I would still go with forty thousand dollars. That's, that's what I would recommend doing. And it's also broken down by acreage, right? How much acreage you can own?
No.
I thought I read in there one acre.
Well, you only get relief on one acre, up to one acre.
Yeah, one acre, okay.
So, you know, if you own three, four, or five acres, then you would pay taxes on anything over the one acre.
Over the one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm okay with leaving it at the one there also. So those, those are the couple of things that I would like to see done. But again, I think it needs to be on no later than the June agenda to be voted on by the board for adoption.
It requires a public hearing, so all we need direction from you is, how do you want to tinker with this chart? And then we'll do the ad, and we'll run it in the paper and have a public hearing. So if you tell us tonight, we can easily get it for the May meeting, but if you need some time to digest it, we can push it to the June meeting.
Okay. I would just say no later than June, so the board is okay with May, I'm good with May.
Is that good for everybody? Just wait till June to decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll have a better grasp on everything that we're going to put into it.
Yeah, and Kim, Kim's already kind of done a chart. We can push that out to you in the Friday update for you to eyeball it, and then if you give us some direction, we can get it updated for a June public hearing.
Sure. Okay. And the other thing I would say is, we need to make sure that the public knows about this, because evidently it hasn't been publicized, it may have been on a website.
Well, it is on the, the bill. It's on the, the back of the bill, it's been there every year for several years. There's, you know, it talks about the tax relief for the elderly and disabled, the veterans, different programs that the county has, it is on the back of the tax bill.
Sure, I, I'm just saying, I think a little more proactive on our end, you know, in getting the word out there, whether it's through the newspaper, whether it's on the radio, whether it's on mailers, whether it's through DSS, whatever it's through, you know, we get the word out there as much as possible, because as we do get older here, we lose, you know, the ability to, to read a lot of that fine print. And so we want to make sure that those folks know about it and can take advantage if possible. And I think also, having somebody to assist them in making sure that they know about it, whether it's filling out forms and things like that, so whatever we can do to assist them.
And we do that, we offer assistance in the office.
Great.
You know, so if they call, you know, they can come in and we assist them fill it out.
Excellent, excellent. That's, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, that's all I've got, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any further, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Vanderhyde, tell me again, the median income, please?
This was the per capita income?
Yeah, the per capita.
Twenty-eight thousand four twenty-eight.
Four twenty-eight, twenty-eight, four twenty-eight.
And it's around the range, because I did look up Danvilles, and at the same timeframe, it was slightly less than that at twenty-six.
Okay. I don't know. I think we, we probably need to put some thought into that. I, I don't think we need to go as high. You know, my personal opinion is forty grand, because that's, you know, now we're not talking about the poverty line, we're talking about far exceeding the per capita income. So, yeah, so if you will, update us and give us a couple of different scenarios there on Friday update, thank you.
Any more questions?
No, I'm good.
Good. All right, thank y'all, appreciate that. All right, moving to item six B, future county strategy discussion by Mr. Terrell.
Future county strategy.
Strategic?
Yeah, strategic.
Yeah, let's bust that out.
Yeah.
Future county.
You like that word, huh?
Welcome.
Yeah, I like that word.
Okay, so the budget is behind us. Let's think about everything we can do with the budget to make things happen. What I'm proposing are five Pennsylvania County strategic initiatives. Okay, the first one is to strengthen and support the fire EMS system, okay? Strengthen and support the fire EMS system, we all know how critical this is. And the goals are, I'm laying these out, complete the fire EMS study, let's review the recommendations and implement them. Let's continue improving the positive communication that we have started in the budget in collaboration with the volunteers, our public safety staff, the committees, the board, and the administration as a business partnership. Let's work on the scheduling of the planned depreciation and replacement of equipment. We saw that come up, a lot of this equipment is aging. Now let's continue discussions about important matters such as the new drug box law, okay? We saw this come up with Mount Cross. This is going to be an issue, we've got to get ahead of it and start having real discussions about operating matters. We've got to look at the volunteer recruitment situation, they need support. I've talked to four or five chiefs in my office about how I can help them as operational business matters. This is critical to customer service that we need to provide our citizens. We need to accelerate the pursuit of grants for equipment. We are doing this now, in fact, we wrote a letter of support for Blair's for an advanced ALS system recently. And we also sent around a USDA grant application form to all the, the stations. So we're pushing as many grants out to fire EMS as we come across, okay? So I think that's first. Second, I think we need a written regional and county economic development strategy, I mean, a written one. We talk about it, we talk about many of the big picture things, but it needs to be written out. It needs to be a clear regional strategy to attract the global companies that are coming here. Guys, we have global multinational companies interested in the megasite. And we need to have a proactive strategy that targets these sectors. I applaud the economic development director, but I'd like to see a regional plan. I'm working with DRF on a grant for this and the city manager. It will, it will require a one-third match, so it's not, any of these consulting contracts are not cheap. I'm trying to get that cost down, I listened to you in the budget, no frivolous spending. If I can find grant support for it, I'll bring that to your attention. But we do need a regional plan. The strategy in the plan is to emphasize our assets, additive manufacturing, very few places have that. The workforce development we have that starts in the middle school and goes all the way through secondary school, through college, so people can get the type of jobs they want with the right training. That's something that many localities in Virginia just don't have, that's unique. And we've got to start selling that more aggressively. This sets us apart and gives us a competitive advantage to recruit more businesses. And we're hustling, things are happening, but we need a written regional plan. Following up behind that, we need a county plan. This needs to be more counties-focused to include agriculture. You know, agriculture is one of our leading products here, if not the top. I haven't seen the latest data. What are we doing to get focused on, on the agricultural sector? The towns, met with a couple of the mayors, three mayors, the north end, I would like to see more attention there. Smith Mountain Lake, Leesville Lake, we were at T LAC meeting recently. There's more we can do to help them. The local and small businesses, we've got to do more to help them find a path to entrepreneurship. And I think we can do more. Now, the county plan can be funded through the IDA, they're talking about that. So really, the financial commitment to y'all would be the one. So, really, the financial commitment to y'all would be the one-third match on the regional. But we need this regional plan, we need the county plan, close behind that, to focus on a large county, and we've got to have a written plan rather than waiting to see what shows up and just being hopeful. We've got to have clear goals and objectives at the regional and county level. We need better coordination with other governments, with the IDA and the civic agencies on strategies. That's why I proposed the Economic Summit. I was at the Rotary meeting today to have a growth and renewal grant. I'd like to know more about that. What's that, what's going on with that? Chatham First has a visioning grant as well, and so I think we need to really sit down and figure out all the things that are going on. Maybe we can work together. It's an idea. Continued emphasis on workforce development. We need to focus on this because, folks, people go through the system and then they find jobs out of the side of the county. We need to keep people in our system finding jobs here, and that means the right workforce for the jobs that are coming here. We have an excellent system. I'm not criticizing it, I just think it's evolving. It's evolving in the modern age, and we need to be on top of that. We need to find the right approach to training our workforce so homegrown kids can stay here and help us build the economy, all right? All right, third, I think we need to be more active in the community. Goals, we, and this came up in the budget, many of the things in the budget are in these strategies, comprehensive land use plan. We need to protect our agricultural heritage while allowing for areas for growth and workforce housing. I am pursuing a fifty percent grant for the comprehensive land use plan, and there's some money in the budget for the other fifty percent. We need a clear housing plan. More industry will be on the way. What is our plan for success? We need to have a clear plan. We started discussions on that, it just needs a lot of follow-up. Ms. Ragsdale's doing an excellent job with that. We just need to really follow up on it. Particularly housing for our mid-price workforce is concerning me. The, you know, the teachers, the public safety folks, blue collar workers that need adequate housing, and they can't just go fix up one of the dilapidated vacant houses in the county, and there are many of them. We need to have a plan to provide the housing, okay? To attract the workforce and keep our young folks here, we need more parks and recreation and other quality programs. The Park Master Plan is underway, it's generating a lot of interest when I walk around and talk to business owners. Mr. Davenport said he found it really intriguing. We have a youth sports coordinator in the budget to expand program options. So, we're going to do more with this budget. It's not a stagnant budget. Beautification and litter, let's clean up the visual appearance of the county, not just the litter, beginning with the Earth Day, April 27th, then ongoing with the Beautification Committee can take over this. This is important for community spirit, for economic development, and it's our home. I mean, let's take care of it, and we need to move on this. Since last year, we have met, I presented this in my forty-five day needs assessment last May, we have met with the sheriff and VDOT. In fact, Jay's here, he used one of the unused snow removals to do another litter, another litter removal. He and I took a tour of the county, and I said, "Mr. Craddock, you know Route 29 is our main street." I said, "It needs to look good for prospective businesses." And so, we used that money, he used another cycle. If you notice, Route 29's looking a little cleaner, but that's, it's got to be more. There's got to be a cohesive plan. I think the Beautification Committee is the right forum for that. It can't just be piecemeal, me getting complaints and then riding out and fixing it. We can do that, it needs to be more coordinated, all right? And as far as a litter update, we have identified a possible DEQ grant to fund a position. Talking to them now to see if we can do that. I think it may be able to be used for a part-time position. We have another position that we can reorient it to do more litter cleanup throughout the county internally. But I think we need more coordinated effort, that's where I'm going with this. All right, not too much longer. Fourth, upgrade the built infrastructure environment. We need to continue to expand the water and sewer infrastructure to implement the water sewer map and bring more folks on the system. Now, we're moving it, we did one recently. We need to accelerate that, grants are key to that, but we need to expand that. We need to continue and upgrade the maintenance of the historic buildings. We've already begun this in the budget with the Moses Building, okay? That came up in the budget, we started, but we needed to, we have other money in the budget for maintenance of the historic buildings. Now, we need to pursue, a lot of this is big-ticket capital stuff. We need more grants. We've got a appropriation request in the federal budget for the Moses Building, and we submitted another one to Congressman Good, although not quite a high monetary level. We need to pursue more grants for water sewer, as I said. Planning for future space needs of the organization, the ETC, we've got to look at what we need to do with that. The 911 Center, okay? Tour that building, and we're trying to keep it operational, but, you know, we need to look at other options, the jail and the courthouse. We need to look at how to relocate for future space needs and then renovate as we go and rehabilitate. These buildings are a gem and need to be maintained. There's budgetary money in there for, in the new budget to do some of that, not all of it, okay? Upgrade the built environment, that was my fourth. Finally, fifth, improve citizen engagement. You know, I'm listening in this budget, we need to, in the budget process, we need to continue outreach efforts such as the Citizens Academy. We need to schedule, I think, quarterly listening sessions. You know, we had a nice, Vic, if you can hear me, a nice meeting at the Axton Situation where we had all the staff go and meet with everybody and answer their questions. I thought that was a good model. We need to do more listening meetings throughout the county, maybe in four quadrants. We need more proactive engagement, apart from the difficult zoning and budget things that come up. It shouldn't always be the controversial meeting. It should be more proactive listening, what's going on here, what do you need? It shouldn't always have the big crowd here when it's controversial, or the tax rate or zoning, okay? So, that's what I'm proposing. We need to, so we're listening to the community, and we're meeting them at the street level for what they need, and it's different for each region because of the size of the county. We need to do more outreach to local or future business owners regarding their needs, that's why I brought up the Economic Summit idea. Improve cooperation with other government and civic agencies. As I said, I attended Chatham Rotary today, they're doing a growth and renewal grant right now, I'd like to get involved with. Continue the good work of our PR director with social media, podcasts, videos of staff to bring to light all the things we're doing with the taxpayers' money as an active, engaged agency in the community, working every day to improve the lives of our citizens, to do the right things for their hard-earned tax dollar. That's what we're here to do. Now, I mentioned many of these items, these five, last May in my forty-five day needs assessment, so I'm building on that. The list of accomplishments I sent y'all is some evidence of things that we've done to achieve those forty, the forty-five day needs assessment and these areas. Obviously, it hasn't, it's not a hundred percent, but it's moving things along on that path, you know? We'll keep moving forward with this budget to achieve these things. I plan to have staff execute these goals, and I'm interested if you have any others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any questions for Mr. Terrell? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Moving to item seven, business meeting discussions. Do we have any further discussions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Moving to item eight, our closed session. Mr. Hunt, would you read us into closed session?
Yes, sir. We have one closed session this afternoon. Discussion, consideration, and interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline of specific or resignation of specific public officials, appointees or employees of any public body, legal authority, Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1. Subject matter, county administrator. Purpose, conduct annual performance review slash evaluation, review slash discussion of the same.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Who was it? Mr. Tucker, motion by Mr. Tucker, second.
By Eddie Height.
Second. Second by Mr. Height, thank you. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. I don't have anything, Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay. Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
Yes, ma'am, I'll vote yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tucker? Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
And Mr. Dalton?
All right, motion carries unanimously. Going into closed session. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
You got it, Biden?
Yeah, hold on, got it right now.
Okay.
Mr. County Administrator, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We will now certify the work session closed session. Be it resolved at the Pittsavanti County Board of Supervisors work session on April 16th, 2024, the board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. I will now take a roll call vote. Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Dalton.
Yes.
And I don't think Mr. Ingram is on the phone anymore, right?
Are we back, Scott?
Yeah. Mr. Ingram, are you on the phone?
I'm on team, so.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Ingram, you need to vote yes or no to the closed session certification, if that's okay.
Yes, sir, I vote yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, the meeting is certified. Now it's appropriate for a motion to adjourn the work session.